I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting for November 7th to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silent. The invocation will be led by Councilmember Peter Heck, pledged by Councilmember Darryl Cross.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to gather together this evening to discuss city business. We ask that you give the staff and council wisdom and clarity in its decision-making. We ask for your will to be accomplished with regard to the Gaza Strip and please keep the innocent people safe and give them access to refuge outside Gaza. We ask you to watch over the men and women who serve in our military the world over, keep them safe and in your hands. We ask also for your blessing on our first responders, including our police and fire departments along with our EMS personnel. Please keep these brave men and women safe in their duties to protect and care for the residents of this city. Thank you for the honor and privilege we have to serve the residents of this great city. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Present.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Saler.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. Intergovernmental agreement. Okay, consent agenda. As a reminder, all items under consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Saler?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
No.
No?
Council... Councilmember Johnson? Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes, but why no?
Motion passes six to one.
We want to pull it?
Well, it should have been done before.
Item seven, you guys?
Item seven. All right, they're all passed now. All right, awards and presentations and proclamations. None. Okay. Regional intergovernment updates from the council. Anyone updates? Wow, no.
Nothing. It's quiet.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a announcement for the Mesa Gateway Airport. The growing Phoenix area airport surpassed its significant activity milestone officially becoming its twenty millionth passenger since the beginning of a commercial service in October of two thousand and two. During the past sixteen years, the airport has had significant increased air service and now offered non-flight, excuse me, non-stop flights, would be great, non-flight, okay? Non-stop flights to more than forty popular destinations across the U.S. The Mesa Gateway Airport Authority is anticipating a continued growth as Allegiant and other airlines announce more exciting destinations in the future. Allegiant's newest non-stop service from Portland, Oregon will begin on the seventeenth of this month. And I want to congratulate everyone out there at the airport for what they're doing and, of course, we're part of that as well. City managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brian Powell, City Manager. Happy to report a couple items tonight. One related to our world of employee engagement and employee morale. Each year, the last six, seven, eight years, in the fall time, we've had a kickball tournament. And this year, we tried something new. We went to Prospector Park and had a employee picnic last Thursday night. Had a wonderful time and great, great, great experience. We usually were getting around seventy to ninety people the night of the kickball over the years, and this time we had over two hundred. We think it was the ability to have a more family-oriented type event, and it was great, and we just wanted to say thank you to supporting this and allowing our employees to have an opportunity to get together and have a meal. We also like to show our spirit in Apache Junction, and this last week, we took a few photos of our employees supporting the Arizona Diamondbacks, who are the National League Champions. And so there are a couple just examples of photos. We're still waiting. We did a bet, little fun deal with the mayor of Rockwall, Texas, which is a suburb of Dallas. We'll see if they send us and have a little conversation about in terms of what we may have to pay back. Mayor, you may have to wear a Texas Ranger hat.
Yeah, I'll have to take this one off.
Yeah. We'll see when that is, and maybe it's the next council meeting. So we'll be doing some of that, and we just wanted to say thanks for support, and we've enjoyed supporting our local team. Now, I'd like to invite up Eli from our office to provide to you the annual report on our point-two percent sales tax. Each year, we are required to come in and do this report. It's part of the point-two percent. As you know, we're about year eight of this tax. So Eli.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, as mentioned, well, good evening, Mayor and council. As mentioned, this report is required from the ordinance. It's actually an administrative direction that was attached to the ordinance when it was originally assigned. As you can see on this slide, the revenues from this point-two percent sales tax are specifically assigned to be used for the maintenance, repair, design, construction, replacement of public right-of-ways. Next slide. So the first year that this began was two thousand and fifteen in March, and we're currently in two thousand and twenty-three, obviously, and it sunsets in March of two thousand and twenty-five. So it's useful to look at these revenues and see, as we've grown as a city, these have trended up, and we have a total revenue collection over this eight-year period of ten point seven million. You'll see the expenses, or sorry, the expenditures, a little bit less regularity year to year as projects start and end dates don't always fall within that annual cycle. But overall, over this eight-year period, we've spent ten point five million with a difference there of about eight hundred and, sorry, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand that will just roll into the next year for more street projects. So the last part of this report that we're required to do is to share the street projects that have gone on during the last year. So in terms of recent reconstruction, there's a stretch on Lost Dutchman Boulevard that's undergone complete reconstruction, and that was finished in January of two thousand and twenty-three. And then two examples of dramatic maintenance projects, asphalt overlay in Bixville subdivision, as well as slurry seals around town in those specific neighborhoods, completed at those times, too. These are projects that extend the life of roads by multiple, multiple years. And this last slide, more routine street maintenance such as crack seal and patch repairs, significant projects done on Ironwood Drive in Delaware Drive, but also smaller projects done around the city. So these are example projects that we've completed where this point-two percent sales tax has been used to improve and maintain our roads. And pending any questions, that concludes this report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Eli. Great job on your first presentation, getting going. One thing I'll make mention of here before we transition to Al, just as a reminder, you'll be hearing more information on this. Penal County has a half-cent sales tax for street and road maintenance that is coming to its end in about a year or a year and a half. They will be starting to share information about what that tax does, what it does if we don't do this in the county, and so that's something that will be coming more and more. They're calling it the Penal County Improvement Fund. And so that's a half-cent sales tax. It's a key piece of, so this is the point-two percent that we just talked about tonight for the City of Apache Junction. It's gonna be ending in a couple of years. But this other one ends in about a year and a half, and it's gonna be up for a vote. The county supervisors just renewed that opportunity to go to the ballot in a year. So more information will be coming on it, but that's a twenty-year tax that was approved twenty years ago.
And to clarify, Brian, Apache Junction gets about three and a half or four million dollars from that county tax every year for our street and roads.
So it's a big chunk. So Ted's gonna come up and talk about Week's Wash, but in working with, it's a huge, huge piece of what we're able to do in the city for our maintenance.
Your Honor, nice question. So does that, did I hear you say that that needs to go on the ballot? That is not a, that's not just a vote, that has to go on the ballot?
That one does, yeah. So that one will be, and it's at the county level.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but it will be on the ballot, yeah. Yeah. Next November. Yeah. And it's different than the one that CAG and the Penal Regional Transportation Authority has been trying to do over the last eight years, which is roads, new roads of regional significant, like the North-South and the extension of the twenty-four. Three different funding sources. Two are existing, one was a net new one. And that concludes my part. I'm gonna turn it over to Al now for updates.
Good evening. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the city, Mayor, members of the city council. Nice to have you, nice to be before you again this evening, tell you about things that are going on. Our event season, of course, is in full swing now that we are entering to the, well, we could call it winter. We don't really have much of a winter around here, do we? But this week is one of the really, really neat weeks that we have here in the City of Apache Junction. We have a really nice celebration of our veterans. We have several, actually, that go on. The big one is on Saturday, but before I get to that, there's also one on Friday night at VFW ninety-three ninety-nine that Councilmember Johnson can tell us a little bit about. Can you tell us what's gonna be happening on Friday night?
Sure. We are having a band. It's gonna be outside in the back lot. It is the Josh Roy Band. You may have seen them down at Mountain View Cemetery for Memorial Day that they have played for us. And the price is going to be seven dollars. We tell everybody, bring your own lawn chair. We had about five hundred people last year. And this is, we're gonna have raffles and a fifty-fifty, and the proceeds go to the different veteran programs for the local veterans or families and things that we can do for the community of Apache Junction.
And VFW ninety-three ninety-nine, of course, is on Apache Trail in Saguaro, correct?
And the actual concert starts, and it is going to be from five to eight.
In the evening on Friday. So there's your kickoff to the Veterans Day weekend because on Saturday, we, of course, have our annual Veterans Day Parade on Apache Trail. That will start a little before nine-thirty. In the morning, there'll be a flyover right after that. That kind of kicks the day off. Everybody, obviously, is welcome. It's always a lot of fun to be part of. The Festival of the Superstitions will also be going on in the park, Red Iron Park, right after that, between ten a.m. and three p.m. That's put on by our Apache Junction Area Chamber of Commerce. And then at eleven o'clock after the parade, at eleven a.m., is the annual Veterans Tribute that we do in the park as part of the celebration. And we have folks representing the different branches of the service, as well as our own Mayor Wilson, who will be addressing the group as well, along with other folks at that ceremony. It's always a very moving and a very, very nice way to acknowledge all of our veterans here in Apache Junction. And as we all know, we have quite a few veterans living in our community. So hopefully, we'll see you on Saturday, Friday night and Saturday. All that information, remember, always on the city's website. We also just had more than three thousand three hundred folks in Superstition Shadows Park a week ago, Saturday night, right before Halloween, took part in our Halloween Festival, which has been moved over to Superstition Shadows Park, a lot more room over there, and it was quite the night, a very, very successful event. We had more than two thousand kids go through the trunk-or-treat part, and like I said, thirty-three hundred folks that came through, a lot of them in costume. And I think a couple of those folks actually are not in costume. They just look that way. But it was a great night for our folks, and so we are, of course, very, very thankful for all the people that made that possible. Obviously, the Apache Junction Parks and Recreation Department puts on great shows for us throughout the year, not too far away from holiday event. That's coming up soon. This week is Free Dump Week, of course, in the city. If you are a resident, you can take a truckload of trash over to the landfill, which is, of course, on baseline off of Tomahawk, and you can do so for free until Saturday, when it closes at four o'clock in the afternoon, I believe. You can always go again to the website to get all the details on that. A few little restrictions, as always, but one of the great programs that we get with the partnership with Republic Services. Also should be aware of Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. That's coming up on November the eighteenth, eight a.m. to noon. It's at the Public Works Yard over on baseline just east of Idaho. That is a twice-a-year event that we hold. We hold one in the fall and one in the spring, where people can bring some of their household hazardous waste stuff, which includes paints and oils, but also appliances as well as electronics. Again, ApacheJunctionAZ.gov is our homepage. You can see all of these details and information, and there's, of course, a little farther in, a list of all the items that you can actually bring to Household Hazardous Waste Day. So make sure you take a look at that. And as always, remember to sign up for our newsletter where you can get all of this information every week. Comes out on Thursdays right on our website. And for that, your announcements for November the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I encourage everybody coming out for the tribute there on Saturday. We're gonna be doing a lot, and of course, it's gonna be, according to weather forecast, a great day. Okay, presentation, discussion, and updates on Week's Wash. Emile.
Your Honor, it's Oxby Ted Wolf, our Public Works Director. Emile couldn't be with us tonight.
Oh.
Not feeling so good.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Ted Wolf, Public Works Director. Again, Emile took ill this morning, so I'm pinch-hitting. So let's go through a few slides. The first one is the watershed map on the left. You can see the amount of, the surface area of the watershed is about ten square miles. Part of it is in Maricopa County, part of it is in Penal County. It generates, the water ends up in the Week's Wash, which has its nearest outfall that we intend to build the structures near the intersection of Lost Dutchman and Goldfield Road. It's there on the right. The idea and intent of this structure is to minimize the flood damage that this area, Apache Junction, can have from major storm events. The idea is to impound about six thousand, no, excuse me, thirteen hundred acre-feet of water. So to give you an idea, if we have a major storm, six thousand cubic feet per second goes down Week's Wash and comes through town. So to give you an idea, if you've ever tubed down the Salt River, that's about twelve hundred. So the volume of water is five times more than goes down the Salt River right now that comes through town. The idea is to meter it, slow it down, and kind of mitigate a lot of the damage effects of the storm. Here's a schematic, if you will, preliminary design of what the structure may look like. Again, this is preliminary, but you can see the outline of the structure there. And impounding the water, the intent of the structure is to bring it to about, it'll withstand a hundred-foot, excuse me, a hundred-year event, flood event. And if we get in excess of that, it will still operate, but what it'll do is the emergency spillways will activate or kick in. It's just an overflow spillway, and the rest of the water will have to go downstream. But the idea is to hold it back and then let it slowly meter out. That's the intent of the structure. We intend to also have a multi-use facility possibly incorporated into the structure. The upstream side, don't know what that exactly would look like. Could be disc golf. It could be horse amenities. We don't know. We haven't gotten that far. Again, this is all preliminary design from where we're at right now. On this slide, you can see the different property ownerships. The stuff, the property in the green is Arizona State land. The property in the magenta is Bureau Reclamation or Bureau Land Management. Part of that on the Bureau Land Management side is also administered by this Salt River Project. They got a major transmission line through there that we will also have to be dealing with. In August of this year, we received a federal grant for forty-four point five million dollars for the structure. We're still looking for additional funding options and opportunities as the cost of the preferred alternative will exceed the grant. We don't know exactly how much, but, you know, preliminary is ninety to a hundred million dollars, just a guess, but that's very preliminary. We have identified some possible funding options with the requirements to make those happen. So we're looking for funding partners. We don't know where we're gonna, how we're gonna close our delta between cost and revenue side. We're working on that. Don't have a solution just yet. We're thinking a bake sale, but I don't know if that's gonna work.
And Ted, we have lots of potential solutions that we're talking through and considering. It's just narrowing down to what the best one is for the city, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. Yeah, we're looking at possible help from different agencies. We've talked with Penal County. We've talked to Maricopa County, because again, part of this, you've got to remember, half of the water comes from Maricopa County, goes across our section of Penal County, and then goes back into Maricopa County. So we're gonna see what, if they can help us out in some form or fashion. We don't know. We haven't had that discussion with them, but it's a thought in our head that we might want to have a discussion with them. Here's a timeline of where we're at right now. You can see some of the grants on the left side there in two thousand and twenty-two. We got a notice for an HMGP federal grant, and then we, in early this year, we put in for some additional federal grants, the BRIC and FMA. We also put in our application to buy the state land. That was Nick Green on that earlier slide. In August of this year, we were notified that we got the FMA grant. That's quite an accomplishment. To my knowledge, it's one of the biggest federal grants from FMA ever granted by the federal government, and we received it. We're still working on the process to get the Arizona State land, the requirements, the surveying, some of the title work. We're working through that. We should have some notice this coming year in March or April. Then we, the next step would be, we've got to consider how we're gonna package our project. Right now, we're looking at possibly a design bid build or a alternate bidding mechanism where the designer and the construction company are together trying to mitigate the cost. The idea here, one of the advantages of this methodology is collapses the amount of time. These grants have a limited time that you need to use the money, or there's consequences. So we're trying to get it done in three years, possibly four, if we ask for a grant, and that's when, other than that, the money goes away. So we need to design and build it in a very short window, and that CMAR or alternate bidding delivery method would help us do that. So we've got some discussions coming on this coming year, next year, early, and decide how we're gonna package this. That would be in two thousand and twenty-four. So once we get to that point, then we, then the designer starts, and then shortly thereafter, you might start seeing dirt moving. Again, the project timeline would be we need to have it all done by two thousand and twenty-eight, and then that's, we hope to have this thing completely built. Few, one more item I want to bring up. So if I came in from the construction industry, heavy heavy civil, and one of the projects, something like this, is we're trying to basically dig a hole and then build the berm around it. The size of the berm is about 4,700 feet long. The maximum height is 30, 30 feet high at the crest. This project has some challenges. One of them is, there's quite a bunch of material we've got to find a home for. We're talking in the order, when we dig this hole, build the berm, we've got about a million cubic yards of material we got to off-haul. So one of the challenges, we're going to try to see if a place we can modify our design, maybe we can minimize that, because that's cost. To give you an idea, it's the size of a football field, 500 feet high, that we would have to haul off. And that's a lot of material. And where do you find a home for that amount? So challenge to the team is, how do we make it go away? We won't be able to take, do our stuff on the project, but we're going to really work on trying to reduce that off-haul, because that would have to all come off the project, onto our road system, and out-delivered somewhere else. So we're going to see what we can do to minimize that. It's part of the project, though. So with that, any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
In a heavy flood event, almost capacity, approximately, how long would it take to drain it through the metering process? And then I suggest maybe Mount Saint, or Mount Apache Junction for big dirt mountain.
If memory serves, it would take about three days to drain the...
Three days?
Three days.
Wow, that's pretty good.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have three questions. On that last chart, down at the bottom left, that ASLD application to purchase 75 acres, who owns that land? I mean...
That's Arizona State Land Department.
Well, is there no way to, do we have to buy it? Can't lease it?
Got to buy it.
Okay. The second question is, that same chart showed that we've, that grant, the FMA grant is 44 and a half million, and we need about 90 to 100 million. What if we don't, can't find a source for the other 44 and a half million, and we only get this? Do we only build half of it to be able to use the grant before it goes away, or do we just lose the grant?
Well, our plan is not to lose the grant, but your point's valid in that, how would we close that delta? We're looking at alternate funding methods. Haven't decided what that would look like. Our financial picture, it could be loans, it could be bonds, something like that. Also, we do intend to talk to some of our sister stakeholder depart, agencies, Maricopa County, and, because they're, downstream of this, they have the flood structure down there, the power line, and one other. They have some, down south here is where all the water is impounded. If this, when this stream flows, that's where it goes. They have intention of rebuilding it. So maybe there's some, okay, if we, there's less water, maybe you don't need to build a bigger one. So we're, we have some opportunities to talk to Maricopa County. Maybe they would help partner and give, you know, supply some amount of money.
Well, I was just curious, because, you know, you had said that, these sources, but that doesn't mean, it doesn't sound like what you're saying is that there, it's so far, anything's come up, so.
Probably the most, if I can add, Your Honor and Councilman Rineser, much of the funding gap will likely have to be closed by bonds through WIFA, which is the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority that the state runs. But we're hoping to close that gap as much as possible, to finance as little as possible through debt. But we're very motivated, because this is the largest FMA grant in Arizona history, any municipality. The closest one, I think, that's ever been awarded in Arizona is 10 million. So I mean, this, we're very motivated, and the engineers we have are also working on it to help us figure out how to close all these different gaps and make this scenario work, because it's that big a deal. It has an impact on, is it 4,000 residential units that can?
I think it's 4,100.
Yeah, 4,100, that it can impact and possibly even help with things like flood insurance or maybe eliminate it altogether. So it's, yeah, we're aggressively attacking this one to make sure it happens.
The other question I had is, I understood what the purpose and how digging this hole and the water to mitigate the flooding and all. Is there no way to capture the water and use it?
No way to capture it. We do have some preliminary ideas where we would put some wells, if you will. We can recharge the aquifer down below. So we're looking into that. But we're talking a large amount of money, water, in a very short time. That's one of the challenges of something like this, in this stream, is when you get a three- or four-inch rain, and you've got 6,000 cubic feet per second, there's no way to do anything. So our idea, our plan is to build that berm, possibly punch some wells, and the water can at least recharge some of the aquifer.
And if that was to happen, we'd get recharge credits, which would help us with our water situation. So we're, we brought that up early on to make sure that we're looking at the feasibility of that. So we're hopeful.
And for all the leftover dirt, you can go throw it in one of the old open-pit mines.
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Bureau Land Management and Arizona State Trust land, they aren't going to help us out at all. Is there any way they can help us with any of this funding, since they own the land?
No. Unfortunately, we've, we've got to buy the state land, and Bureau of Land Management may give us rights to. We probably won't have to purchase it, is what we're hearing, but they'll just, as far as funding for it, no.
Yeah, it's going to wash your hands and say, here, take it.
Dollar a year, at least.
Well, and one perspective from the federal government is, they may view it as the rules and regulations they have. The 45 million is the federal government. So, yep, that's one perspective. The other piece is, with your help...
Hello.
Watch your knees.
Are we awake?
All right.
And with the help of the mayor and city council, we have been working with our legislative congressional district, and they are going to do all they can to help us, Ted mentioned this, get on the property, have the ability to start doing the things that we need to do due diligence-wise. I think that's a big help as well. But we'll still have to go through their processes, and hopefully, they, you know, we've, anytime we've ever brought this up with anybody, SRP, state, federal, county, and any partner, they're like, they've seen so many videos of, you know, this wash, and they're going to, they've been leaning with us to help this happen.
Your Honor?
Yes.
This is just more of a curiosity question. During the construction of this project, let's say you're on 2026, starting to roll around, and we get one of those 100-year rains during this process. Are you having some sort of divert, to divert the water coming through, so it doesn't interfere with the construction zone?
Well, the design is to put a continually open pipe through the bottom of the structure. So as we build the structure up in elevation, that would still be operational. It's one of the first things they'll do, is build the pipe, if you will. So it would still operate. Hopefully, we don't get into that, but it, there's a chance that would happen. Again, that would be on the design firm to try to mitigate that in their design and constructability. How are they going to handle that? Once the, again, once the structure was built, then we have the pipe at the bottom, and we have an overflow along the top of the crest. So if we get a major event, it will, we don't lose the structure.
Okay. And so this one, I'm kind of referring to the mayor. What is that material that is used for this concrete?
Oh, aggregate.
If you come across any of that, you could sell that in your material.
That's one of the advantages of design-build, because the contractor's going to try to minimize his cost. So the firms will be looking at, how can we, maybe they can crush it, screen it, and sell this stuff. Maybe there's some market there. That's all, that'll be them to solve and resolve, and they'll put it, reflect in their price to us. And hopefully, they take advantages of that kind of opportunity. That's one of the reasons why we're looking at some of these alternate bid methods, instead of just designing it and then putting it out to bid, and then the constructor builds, you know, there's, sometimes there's some problems there. Again, it also shortens the time, because they're going to be designing it on the fly while they're building it. And they can come up with solutions like that, because it might save the project money, and they get the job.
Right on.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other questions?
That's it, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You covered everything I wanted to cover.
Yeah, yeah. This is just an update to a major, major, major project. Keep you all posted.
Okay. We don't have any new business, no direction, meeting dates. Okay, it's a call to the public. I would like to remind everyone, the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Requested speaks forms must have been completed and handled, handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism, and may direct the staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place the matter on the future agenda for a council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and we request that you put your name and address as part of it as well. All right. Oh, jeez. War truck. Okay. Patricia Ruck?
Ruck.
Ruck?
Ruck.
Ruck. Sorry about butchering your name.
Okay.
Patricia Ruck, 400 North Plaza Drive, AJ. My concern is the stoplight at the intersection of Apache Trail, Phelps Drive, and Old West Highway. When coming past the Flatiron Park to make a left-hand turn onto the Old West Highway, early morning, 6:00, 8:00 a.m., if there's no car in the center lane to continue onto Phelps Drive, the light does not turn green to allow the cars to turn left. I have sat there on more than one occasion for as many as five light changes for everybody else, Phelps Drive, even if there's two cars there, and it does not turn on the, on the Apache Trail coming past Flatiron Park going onto Old West Highway, turning to the left. If there's a car in the middle lane, then the light will pick it up sometimes. And I don't know if it's an activation thing on the camera, if it's not placed quite right, or what is the experience. But I, a week ago, there was a large Dodge truck in the center lane, so I thought, oh, this is for sure going to turn, turning onto the trail, turning onto the Old West Trail, and it did not turn. The white truck, we sat there through four light changes for everybody else, and then the Dodge truck turned from the center lane onto, he went right from the center lane, and, and quite aggressively. And I've seen all kinds of, people do all kinds of things there, as back up from that turn lane, and, and go in the center lane then, so that they could catch the camera to change the lights. But it's, it's a big problem there. I'm afraid there's going to be a bad accident from people getting frustrated from sitting through so many light changes for everybody else, and it just doesn't change for the people coming. I mean, it's just mostly early mornings. I don't even go that way anymore. That's all I have. It's a concern. If I didn't place my concern, and there was an accident, and somebody gets hurt badly there because of the speed of the traffic, I would feel that I didn't do my due diligence. So thank you.
Thank you. Eddie Oly?
Hi. Eddie Oly, 2364 North Apache Drive. My concern is the same as it's been the last couple of times I've been up here. I live on the southeast corner of Lost Dutchman and Idaho, and at that intersection there, there's the water towers or the water tanks. And there's a guard rail that covers those water tanks, and they also cover the, my neighbors, which I'm the second house behind that neighbor. And I'm on the same embankment that goes up through there, and my neighbors guarded from that. If there's any cars going off the road or whatever, or into the water towers, it would be protected. They'd stay on the road. But my home goes the long way, and it goes all the way down. And basically, I'm just trying to get somebody to talk to, to maybe come over, check out what I'm talking about, see it, realize what, what the concern is. My house is not being protected from that situation. And the guard rail would actually cure a lot of problems by it just being extended all the way down. It stops before the, even the dead-end road of where I live. And then there's all kinds of problems there, too, with people going up through there with their motorcycles and their horses and whatnot through the dead end, which would block that all off if the guard rail was extended all the way down. And also, I had issues with, you know, cars, because the road has been completely done, and it's nice and smooth. It's a great road now. It's 45 miles an hour, but there's a lot of, lot of speeders, a lot of traffic through there. So it's a lot of noise pollution, and it's, it makes me feel unsafe of something happening. You know, my neighbor, he's safe, but I'm not. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Andrew Meek?
Andre.
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 Good evening, Mayor, Council. Andre Meek, 1327 South Bel Air Road here in AJ. Since we're on the subject of traffic lights, I noticed the other day, I sat at Ironwood for three signals on the trail there, heading east. It would let five cars through and then start to change. So apparently, there's something wrong with the timer there, because you should get at least a full minute when you've got a full street of traffic. But another thing is, Week's Wash, sound like an opportunity for a water park, you know? Start charging for people. But, you know, I like the idea. I take it it's going to look kind of like up there at Idaho Road and, and Lost Dutchman, where you have the big dykes and everything like that. So, you know, there's opportunity to make it, you know, accessible for recreation. And, you know, during flood time, we'll keep your butt out. But other times, you know, it'd be a nice place to get some parks or something like that in there, too. And maybe we get some assistance in that respect, you know, making it more of a, you know, a playground instead of just a hole to catch the water. And about it. Thank you.
George Schroeder?
George Schroeder, 244 West Virginia Street. Obviously, my throat is stressed right now. I have been telling you folks for 12 years, you've got to do your own investigations, because these two, they don't give a crap, okay? The land trust is a lot like a drug cartel. Land is their drug. The only people that have access to that account, the $9 billion they steal from us and don't help us with it, is locked in there. Only the people who run this state are allowed to use that money. They're not, they don't give a crap. They're not going to give you one red cent. You need to read the Land Trust Act, all of it. You will understand what I've known for 35 years now. Okay? That's why I come up here every time I chance I get, to help you understand that these people are stealing from us, and they have their 12, 13 charities. Yeah, it's got nothing to do with us. Has to do with their people. Yeah, it's got nothing to do with us, has to do with their people. Now, squatters in Pinal County, as well as Apache Junction, you have a law, no squatters, no living in anything that is not taxable on the recorders roll. No holes in the ground, no truck campers, no, no new little sheds, okay? No campers, no trailers, no fifth wheels, especially in the front yard. They're coming, they're here, a lot of them are here already, trying to do it in my neighborhood. I gotta go by at two o'clock in the morning and beep the horn, and just let them know that you're not welcome. I don't care what anybody thinks of it. It's not harassment. They're harassing my neighborhood by doing something they're not supposed to be doing, by squatting what they shouldn't be doing. I called code enforcement on my neighbor, who almost burnt their, their residence, almost burned down a house. City comes out, as a P comes out, they figured the problem was, it's a sixty amp house that sometimes has eleven, twelve people in there, babies, four dogs, five dogs, and they can't use the house, because it's not powered to do so. It never was, because our city didn't go out and look and see if the place was rentable to those types of people. I'm not judging them, they're a problem, but I'm not judging them for that. So SRP goes out, they get hooked up whatever they can, owner comes out, does whatever he can, SRP comes back, turns it on. Well, there's still a problem. One of the sockets in the house was loose and getting hot. I'm telling you, it's because the city did not follow through and make sure that the premises were ready for the living, and the people had lived there the whole time, which they're not supposed to do. See, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's not right here, and you're just, okay, who cares? Who cares? I care. They're gonna burn down their house right next to mine.
Thank you. Donna Carr?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. I guess I have, first off, is a question, which I'm sure you're not allowed to answer me at this point, but our last mayor, he was on the board for the Gateway, and you're on the board for the Gateway, and we threw money at the Gateway, and we threw money at the twenty-four. And I know that, I, I guess I get to the point where it's frustrating, it's paying extra money in taxes here in AJ, when I was told, well, I'll just let people know, just go to the other side of Meridian and do your shopping, you don't have to pay taxes on food. Well, if you do that, the council member said to me, is, then we're gonna start taxing your property. And I think that's wrong. The other thing I was gonna bring up is, is the fact is, is that, I'm gonna bring up the reclaimed water again, and I don't know if you guys looked into the hormone thing, but in the UK, right now, there's a lawsuit from the farmers against the government for the sludge that's left over after the reclaimed water, as, because the sludge has poisoned the crops with chemicals and, and whatnot, all the stuff that's left. And the other thing is, is that I really do need, think that we need to put something in here for the younger generation in Apache Junction, because we sit here, and, and something I read the other day says, parents teach their kids to do chores, they teach their kids to be respectful, they teach their kids to be polite, but the one thing that they don't teach their kids is how to have fun. And it doesn't come from buying a toy, or paying for this, or paying for that every time you turn around. I think quality time, and quality time with parents, be able to do stuff with their kids, not just sit on the floor and play Legos, but I mean, go do stuff with their kids. I think that's important. And I remember when Governor Gary, I mean, right, the last, the last governor that was in, he said, we need to put in more golf courses. And I said, do you know how much water it takes for one golf course? And so just think about the younger generation, that's all I'm asking, thanks.
Okay, can we address the concerns on the two intersections for the streetlights?
Yeah, we should look at that. It's a great night, Ted's here, perfect night, so we'll get right on that. Thank you, it's a safety matter.
I've been experiencing the, the same problem as well, and so...
At the same intersection of Phelps and...
Both the intersections.
Both of those intersections. I'm showing, you got him, Ted, Phelps and the trail, and you got him, okay, he's got it, yeah.
And Brian, we were, last time we discussed about that guard rail, too, let's get an update on that.
Follow up on that. Let's get you a follow up on that, and an update and a paragraph on what the cost would be to put in a guard rail. Yep, we owe you. Ted, if you can give me that, too.
All right.
It's a Public Works Night.
Yep. I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.